Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. And this evening, we'll be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner and then Commissioner Chantos Serena will lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, it is good to be here again tonight, Lord, and we're thankful for this opportunity that we've been afforded to represent our constituents. And we think about those in our community, Father, who are starting school. We're thankful for those families and those teachers and principals and educators who embrace our children here, Lord, and we just ask that you protect them this year and that you allow each one of those individuals involved in education to have a successful school year here. We think about Lisa Duke Crowell tonight, Lord. We just ask that you continue to be with her and that you just touch her body and we pray for healing, but let her know that we care about her, Lord, and that we love her and that we are anxious to see her get back into full recovery. Lord, guide us tonight as we honor you with our conversations and the decisions that we need to make tonight. May we make you proud and may we make our constituents proud with the way that we conduct ourselves and our business, Lord, and I ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Doug Schaefer.
Here.
Steve Piercy.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Robert P.
Here.
Carol Cook.
Here.
Joe Frank Jernigan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
President.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Joe Gurley.
Here.
Brad Turner.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Robert Stevens.
Here.
Paul Johnson.
Here.
Charlie Baum.
Here.
David Nipper.
Here.
Phil Dodd.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Alan McAdoo.
Here.
Sean Kaplan.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
And Chantos Serena.
Here.
We have 21 present.
All right. Thank you very much. You have received a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order and move that they be approved.
And a second from Commissioner Kush. Anyone have any corrections or additions? If not, everyone in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. September, I believe, is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, so we're going to call on Commissioner Turner and we're going to ask him to be joined by Kim Rush, who is the voluntary behavioral health services, I believe, and she has initiated this and requested this, so we'll just give her the honor of coming up here with him.
Thank you, Ms. Rush.
As the mayor mentioned, I just kind of want to touch on this just for a second. Commissioner Allen, this has been something that's been near and dear to her heart. She's been battling sinuses, so she asked if I would step in to read this for her. But we were kind of chatting offline a little bit about suicide is for real. You know, we've got a lot of individuals in our community that are hurting, that don't talk to people and aren't aware of some of those resources that are out there to be able to help them, recognize when they've got some problems and challenges and people that are out there that want to help them. And I think, you know, not only individually, but collectively as a body of leaders and a community, we owe it to them to make sure that we provide these types of information to them and these types of events and more notoriety to some of those things that folks are challenging with. I told Rhonda that I was driving in, right before I got here, I saw an article online about a nine-year-old that killed himself because he felt like he was getting bullied at school. I mean, we've got to be better than that. We have to be better than that as a community, as a country. And so I'm thankful that we've got organizations like this that Ms. Rush is involved in and others that want to provide those types of services. So I'm asking each one of you, as I read some of these statistics in this resolution, just to challenge yourself a little bit and think, what can I do to try to make an impact and let somebody know that they're loved and that there are resources and there is help out there for them? The resolution recognizing September 2016 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, with more than 950 lives lost in Tennessee each year and an estimated eight to 25 attempted suicides for each suicide death. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of all deaths in Tennessee and the second leading cause of death among people from the age of 15 to 24, according to the Tennessee Department of Health. And whereas Tennessee veterans, active-duty military personnel, National Guardsmen face a disproportionate risk as compared to the general population of Tennessee, with more dying from suicide than combat. Think about that. We put those gentlemen and those ladies in harm's way and sometimes they can't come back and get the services that they need. Whereas public awareness of this terrifying problem is the key to preventing further suffering and loss of life, and the risk for human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment. And as the highest risk for suicide is among the survivors of those who died by suicide or by those who have attempted suicide. And whereas suicide prevention has been declared a national priority by the President and Congress, and Tennessee declares suicide prevention as a state priority in the legislature, in partnership with the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network, implements the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention based on the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas Tennessee is a national leader in the effort to prevent suicide, being one of the first states to develop a suicide prevention and evaluation plan covering the lifespan. And whereas the governor of Tennessee has appointed a Suicide Prevention Network Advisory Council to coordinate the implementation of the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network is a grassroots collaboration of Tennesseans and organizations working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the rate of suicide in our state. And whereas the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network is also committed to excellence in suicide prevention, intervention, and post-intervention. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we recognize September 2016 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Rutherford County, Tennessee, and do urge all citizens to work to prevent suicide and to raise awareness and tolerance around all people affected by this tragedy. Resolve this 15th day of September 2016. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for this approval.
And a second by Ms. Allen and others, I'm sure, all in favor, then please say aye.
Aye. Ms. Rush, would you like to say a few words, please?
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you all for allowing me to be here. I want to thank Mayor Burgess, as well as Deputy Mayor Davidson and Commissioner Turner and all of you all. Suicide is a preventable death. That is one myth about it. Ninety-five percent of people who are actually suicidal really don't want to die. They just don't know what else to do. And it's a silent killer. There's a lot of stigma and shame attached to it. So through these proclamations, through the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network, we work to educate people. We work to let people know it's okay to talk about it. Everybody's afraid of the S-word, but the more that we bring it out in the open, the greater it's going to be, we're going to do. So thank you all so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution recognition of the Segal High School baseball team. Commissioner Baum.
Thank you. We've got several representatives from the Segal High School baseball team in the audience, and I'd like to invite them to come up here and join me. I've told them I'm not going to ask them to say anything. I wouldn't want to play baseball in front of anybody, and they may not want to speak in front of the commission. I don't know. They might be happy to. I live right behind the Segal schools and my three children attend the Segal schools, so I'm proud of the Segal High School baseball team and I'm proud to be part of the Segal community, and I think that's great. Some of y'all may be suspecting that the team has more than three or four members on it. I have a feeling the rest of the players are out practicing right now, getting ready for the next state championship. We have a resolution of recognition for the Segal High School baseball team and their state championship. Whereas for the first time in school history, the Segal High School baseball team won the state championship when they beat Arlington, winning nine to eight at MTSU's Reese Smith Jr. Field. And whereas this has been an exciting and successful season, and special commendation is due all team members, Coach Craig Rivas and Principal Larry Creasy for their dedication and commitment which made this championship possible and for bringing this fine publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2016 Segal High School baseball team, Coach Craig Rivas and Principal Larry Creasy for their successful year. Resolve this 15th day of September 2016. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner P. and Phillips, I believe, and others. Okay, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sure we all congratulate you and wish you the best in all the upcoming years. And Coach, if you want to say anything, go right ahead.
I just want to appreciate or tell y'all, I appreciate y'all inviting us out. I remember about 12 years ago, when the school was being built, we had all kinds of issues with athletic facilities and I actually didn't have a field for that first year, but I remember coming and sitting in these meetings and watching everybody get it worked out and push through and, you know, get the field built 11 years later. You know, we get to see some fruition of that with the state championship and a lot of exciting games being played on our field. I wish more were here tonight. We do have more guys. We have some that head out for fall tournaments and got guys working. I don't quite have a good grip on them in the fall as I will in the spring, but they appreciate everything y'all have done to make this possible for us, and I appreciate y'all having us here tonight. And we're going to get after it again this year and see what we can do. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Let me introduce seniors here.
I got two seniors that are in college, Alex Kergnen and Tanner Moss, and I got a junior here, if you can believe he's just a junior. Zach Pearson made it out tonight. And I would like to say one thing about this guy right here. About a week or so after the state tournament, I received an email from the TWSSAA, and somebody had sent them a letter, just a couple grandparents that were at the state tournament watching the game before ours with their little five-year-old. And they said that one of my players had gone up to him before the game, talked to him, asked him his number, asked him what position he played, this and that, just made an impression on the kid. Kid went home, didn't want to leave. They had to leave, but they got on the internet, checked it out, found his number, and he made a little lifelong Segal High fan. But Tanner here was the guy that took the time to do that before our biggest game in our history and really made, you know, I mean, out of everything that happened, I was about as proud of that as anything. Not that I'm not proud of everything else, but I am. But that was, I just thought y'all would like to hear something about that and the character of some of our kids and what it takes to win a championship, to have guys like that. But thank y'all.
Okay, we don't have any public comments requested for tonight. Therefore, Commissioner Turner, we're ready for elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you'll find on your iPad a list of notaries that we need to approve, and Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And we have a second from Commissioner Phillips. Anyone have any additions to that list or otherwise? If not, everyone in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Turner.
For the 2016-27 commissioner year, we need to confirm the Ethics Committee and the Steering Committee would like to nominate Commissioner Rhonda Allen, Mr. Ted Beatty, former Commissioner Joyce Edley, Commissioner Robert P., and Commissioner Brad Turner. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Actually, those are mayor's appointments, so just confirmation is an announcement's all we really have to do here.
Thank you.
All right.
Steering would also like to fill two vacancies on the Codes Enforcement Board. Steering nominates Mr. Joe Machado and Mr. Glenn Taylor. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second, Commissioner Jordan. Any other nominations or questions? Otherwise, we're ready to vote. Please cast your votes. And I didn't really mean for you to do it electronically, just all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
We also need to fill the citizen vacancy on the Audit Committee, and Steering nominates Ms. Barbara Sutton. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for her approval.
Second from Ms. Allen. So we have one nomination. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Steering would like to announce three vacancies on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Steering would like to announce one vacancy and one alternate vacancy on the Beer Board. And this time, we need to confirm the confirmation of Commission Chairman. Now, do I need to just nominate?
I think you should go ahead and do that, I guess.
Okay.
And I'll just stand aside.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the Commission Chairman. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. I move that we nominate our current Chairman, Mayor Burgess, by acclamation.
There's a proper motion. Is there a proper second? Seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. At this time, I will turn this over to our newly-elected Commission Chair for the election of the Chairman Pro Tem. Mayor Burgess.
Okay, so we're in the position now of electing a Chairman Pro Tem, so we'll open the floor for nominations. Commissioner Schaefer.
I nominate Commissioner Jeff Phillips for Commissioner, for Commission Pro Tem.
Chairman Pro, second, Commissioner Dodd and Nipper, I believe, back there. Any other nominations? Okay, all of, Ms. Cook? Ms. Cook made a nomination, motion that nomination ceased, and we elect Mr. Phillips by acclamation. Was that your motion? And a second by Commissioner Schaefer. All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And next, we're in the position of electing the Commission Chaplain. We'll open the floor for nominations for Chaplain for our commission. Do we have a motion? Mr. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I nominate Commissioner Brad Turner.
And a second, was that Mr. Kush and others, maybe? But anyway, any other nominations? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe that was by acclamation as well, Mr. Turner.
Thank you. I very much enjoy serving. I appreciate it.
Go ahead to the next agenda item.
Yes, sir. At this time, we need to elect the 2016-27 Standing Committees. You should have received a list from Commissioner Gooch, and I believe everyone on the commission had their first choice. We were able to do that, and the vast majority had the second. So if you would, at this time, Mr. Chairman, I go ahead and make the motion that we approve the Standing Committees for the 2016-2017 calendar year, and I will make that motion.
Second from Mr. Phillips, and I believe I've heard others as well. Any other discussion or question about this? I believe, Mr. Turner, these committees are 100% the same as last, as the current term, I believe.
That is correct. Something changed in the last day, but to my knowledge, they are the same as last year.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, everyone in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Commissioner Turner. All right. Commissioner Phillips, on a resolution to approve the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
After elected chairman and the vice chairman of each of the committees and set their dates.
Let's see. Good catch there, Mr. Stevens. All right, so what we have to do, then, is just pause here for a moment and let each of the committees, let me get the list of this out. You got yours already up there. All right, we'll just start with Budget and Finance and ask that group, and you know who you are, to assemble in room 205 and select your chairperson and vice chair, and then return with your report and your date of and time of meeting. I'll get mine out. Okay, thank you. Okay, the report from the Budget Committee is, Ms. Commissioner Jordan is chairperson, Mr. Baum is vice chair, and they'll continue to meet on the Thursday at 5:30 before the commission meets, the following week. Public Safety Committee. Chairperson of Public Safety, Commissioner Schaefer. Commissioner Reed is the vice chair, and they'll continue to meet on the fourth Monday at 5:30. Next, Public Works and Planning Committee. Okay. Okay. All right, on Public Works, Commissioner Jernigan is chairperson and Commissioner Kush is our vice chair, and they meet on the Tuesday after the first Monday at 5:30. Health and Education Committee, please. I've got that. Okay, Health and Education Committee. Commissioner Allen is chairperson, Commissioner Reed is vice chair, and they meet on the fourth Tuesday of the month at 5:30. Next is Property Management. We think it's at 6 o'clock. Property Management Chairperson is Commissioner McAdoo, and the vice chair is Commissioner Johnson, and they continue to meet on the fourth Thursday at 5:30. Steering Legislative and Government Committee. Steering Legislative and Government Committee, please, you're next. Have we already done them? Okay, so I've already done them, so thank you for keeping me on track. All right, so that finishes that assignment then, so we've chosen your chair and vice chairs for the next year. Okay. Now, what purchasing, we'll just do that when we meet together, okay? The mayor is automatically the chairperson and we'll just let them pick one then. Let's see then, next, we're ready for one public hearing that we have. So, we have one rezoning request, 16-A-Z, Row 12. Applicant Eddie Smotherman, this is located in the vicinity of 10,215 Midland Road. Existing zoning is residential low density. Proposed zoning is a planned unit development for a residential subdivision. Size of the site is approximately 62 acres. Mr. Demossi, you may tell us more about that, please.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and members of the Commission. Just as a way of a little background, as Mayor Burgess stated, these properties are located along Midland Road. The subject properties were approved originally for a conditional use permit for a planned residential development, at the time known as a PRD, by the Board of Commissioners back in October of 2007. There was an amendment to the original approval regarding low-flow fire hydrant stubouts for future installation, which was approved by the Board in February of 2008. I did include copies of those conditional use permits in your agenda packets, which are on your iPads. On your iPad, you'll also find a copy of the pattern book, which will be referenced tonight, as well as an exhibit that the applicant, I believe, is going to reference a little later on. No final plat was ever received, although we did receive a preliminary plat at the Planning Commission at their April 14, 2008 meeting, which was approved. Again, no final plat was ever received for the development and the preliminary approval ended up being extended several years after that original approval. The applicant did ask for an original extension back in January of this year, but that was denied by the Planning Commission. After that denial, the applicant did meet with staff and discuss some possible changes that they wanted to make to the development, which would have necessitated a reapproval and resubmital anyway. So, after discussing with the applicant, we encouraged them at that point, if they wanted to move forward, that they would need to submit a new application using today's regulations. The layout of the proposed application is actually very similar to the original application that was received back in 2007. It also includes two access points, where the original only had one access point. The current proposal also has 10 less lots than the original. The original was for 126 lots, this new proposal's for 116, so again, they did lose 10 lots in that. The original approval, I'm sorry, the application they submitted earlier this year has changed a little bit from when the submittal was originally made. Originally, the house sizes were a little different than what they're proposing now. They're showing homes in the range from anywhere from 1,600 feet, square feet and up, to be built with a minimum of 75% brick and masonry material, stone, stucco, those kind of things. The remainder would be allowed to be vinyl sided. Again, more specific details can be found in your pattern book. That was a result, really, some of those changes were the result of a neighborhood meeting that was held with several of the neighbors in that area prior to the Planning Commission's meeting back in July. Again, we talked about the access points. There are two access points, which staff is actually very encouraged about. Staff doesn't particularly care for subdivisions with only one access, in and out, for emergency purposes. Also, when we looked at the development, we also required that a traffic study was going to need to be presented for this development. That traffic study was submitted. Overall, the traffic study did find that traffic along Midland Road, even if it were doubled beyond what the development was going to do, the road was still found to operate in a very high level, either a Level Service A or B. There was some concern about landscaping as well. You'll see that there was an email received from the Planning and Coats Director in Bedford County regarding that south property line, because this property does abut Bedford County. One of the neighbors along the north side also had some concerns about the lack of buffering along their side of the property line. As another concession, the applicant did agree to place a tree buffer along that northern entrance drive with the open space, which is already located in that area to help address those concerns. Originally, back in 2007, this was a development that was going to be sprinkled for the homes. The homes out in that area, the water lines cannot support the fire hydrants, despite the fact that there have been a number of water improvements to the system made in that area. That is still the case, they are still going to use sprinklers. I spoke with Bill Danelle from Consolidated Utility District as early as this morning, talked with him briefly about that. He said they would have to do some line expansions in order for it to have hydrants. However, that being said, the county does make provisions for sprinkler systems and subdivisions for situations such as this. There were several people who did speak at the public hearing on this application. Most of those concerns raised were in relation to the flooding and drainage on the property. Also, traffic concerns were brought up. Again, the water availability issue and the smaller lot sizes. The lot sizes are proposed to be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. That is consistent with what the original approval was back in 2007. When that original motion was made, the Planning Commission did make a motion to ultimately deny this application. Some of those concerns raised included the density of development this far out in the rural parts of the county, the need for better infrastructure, and also the possible lack of police patrols. That motion did pass by a vote of eight for and two against. That being said, I will say that I do believe that the applicant has attempted to address the neighbor's concerns to the extent possible. I think they have listened to what the neighbor's concerns were in the area and have made changes consistent with hearing those concerns. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi before we start the public hearing? Commissioner Dodd.
Do remind me, please, you may have stated, I got distracted briefly. The staff approves of this by virtue of its meeting the standards, meeting the intention of the zoning.
Well, originally, right. Originally, and I didn't say one way or the other, actually, so thank you for bringing that up. The original staff position, which we maintained throughout the process, was a neutral stance, mainly because we were still waiting to see what ultimately they were going to do with the water line situation and then the results of the traffic study. After seeing that, we're pretty much comfortable with the request. Our engineering staff has reviewed the traffic study and concurred with its recommendations. And again, from a staff standpoint, from my personal standpoint, I like the design better with the two access points than what they had originally with just the one, so we're more comfortable with it than we were. Yes, sir.
Other questions for Mr. Demossi? Okay, so stand aside, please, for a moment, Mr. Demossi, and we will declare the public hearing with respect to rezoning request 16-A-Z, Row 12, open. If there are those present that wish to speak for or against, now is your opportunity to come forward and make your comments and give us your name and address, please.
Yes, sir, I'm Jamie Reed. I'm the engineer and surveyor at SEC on this project. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I would like to briefly go through the timeline. I think Doug reiterated some, but I want to explain why we're kind of at this point from the beginning. Back, like Doug reiterated, the rezoning back in '07 and '08 started this project. It was approved with sprinklers back in '08. Then in April of '08, they got preliminary plat approval. And then, the economy, as we all know, tanked '09, '10, I mean, '10, '11, and '12. And in 2013, we got involved with this project at that time. SEC Incorporated got involved with Mr. Smotherman. And then, what we initially did when we got involved on that, Mr. Smotherman was ready to proceed in doing his project, we went and set up meetings with CUD, Consolidated Utility District, Bill and those guys. And at that time, 2013, we were informed by CUD that the taps that we were originally granted, or told we had back in '07 and '08, we no longer had. Other people had taken it during the economy downturn and stuff like that. So, then we basically had to back up and punt. So, we, CUD said, Jamie, this is not a bad thing. We do have water lines currently being designed and a water tank being designed in this area currently, as we're speaking. So, there, we go from there, we're like, okay. So, we wait a couple of years, they said it'd take a couple of years to do all that. So, we go from 2013, '14, and '15, and during '15, we're still waiting on them to finish the construction plans for the water. So, we can't proceed without the water at that. So, we're kind of stuck in the middle of all this. So, in January of this year, the water lines, I think, were about done, but the tank was not finished or not in service. So, then we go to the Planning Commission in January, waiting on CUD to get us the water lines, we get denied because the water lines aren't built. And that's kind of where we're at right now. So, then we backed up and punted again, and so we said, okay. So, we got with Doug, like Doug mentioned, we met with planning staff. We redesigned the PUD to meet the current subdivision regulations. We provided a traffic study, added additional entrances, off-site roadway improvements down at Midland, Midland intersection up there. We did, added detention ponds that wasn't on the original design, because back then, when it was originally approved, you could drain into the Blue Line streams. This one, we redesigned, we've got several ponds shown on this one. And also, we redesigned it with two entrances, 10 less lots on this design that we're currently talking about. And right now, I'd like to, if I could, flip around and highlight some areas. Doug, if that, if the map, yeah, the map of the area, so I can kind of describe some services. I think there was some discussion at the last meeting about where certain services were in relation to the site. Up here, the yellow right there is Stackhorn subdivision, as it sits right now. And these little, little like bubbles, like if you drop a rock in the water, kind of goes out, those are one-mile radiuses. So, from this subdivision to the north, less than a mile away at the entrance, there's an existing subdivision, 200-plus lots with future development within that subdivision that still hadn't been developed, under the R-15 zoning. Just a little bit to the north, another mile to the north of that, there's 73 lots, R-15, that was approved. Over here, a little bit to the west, we've got a 42-lot subdivision, R-15, that was approved back a few years ago. And then, over here to the east of Stackhorn, a little over three miles away, we've got a volunteer fire department, which is just a little over three miles away, which it's just got a grant, it's my understanding, just got a grant for the tank increase, for a tanker to be able to service, you know, sprinklers or fire protection and stuff in that area. Okay, is there any questions, why I've got that up, or anything? Now, I'd like to just... Yes, sir, yes, sir. They, shortly after we were denied at Planning Commission for the preliminary plat extension, they did finish the tank and the tower. I mean, the tank and the water line improvements in that area, yes. But I think we do have, I mean, a better plan, just like Doug said. I think regardless of what all that went down, I think we do have a better plan for the county. We've got, like Doug mentioned, we've got two entrances coming out there. We're only 1.86 dwelling units per acre, we're 10 less lots than we were before. We've got a lot more open space in this development. I'm just going to flip through here a couple of sheets. Sheet number two, page number two, kind of shows you an overall view of the subdivision of 116 lots with the two entrances. On the east side of the subdivision, you see it's mostly green, that's the step system portion of the subdivision. And during the interim, while we were waiting on this, the step system has already been approved at the state. We've already got a state operating permit from TDEC to do the step system, which we're, as soon as, if we get approval here, we can proceed, the plans, all we've got to do is submit plans to the state. We've actually designed Phase One construction plans here also to meet the current subdivision regulations. As you can see on sheet, I'm sorry, sheet seven, kind of shows you the phasing diagram. Phase One, we have already designed Phase One. Planning staff, I've met with Mike Hughes, we've got detention ponds laid out to meet the current subdivision regulations. Not only have we asked for, you know, rezoning to meet this, we've actually designed the first section to make sure we can meet all this. We've also done, you know, went above and beyond, we've got utilities out there. We know we've already met with the state, we've got a state operating permit for the step system now. We've got water lines out there now that are available for CUD. So, we feel we've kind of, even though we've kind of hit some bad times during that, we think we've fulfilled a pretty good project now for the county. The utilities, of course, like I just mentioned, are consolidated utility. Duck River will be the electric company in this area, breaking through there. And also, I know there was some discussion last time about, excuse me, the roads out in that area. Like Doug reiterated, there was a Level of Service A out there, that's about the best you can get. And if you look at sheet number four, you'll see the views of that road. The existing road is a well-stripped road. You can visually see, as far as you can see the picture will take, so there's not really any obstructions in that area. It's low-volume type traffic. We're only adding 116 units at two entrance points now, instead of one. Let's see here, I'll flip through some of the proposed development standards before I go off on questions, what we've proposed. I think Doug kind of touched on some of these, but the minimum lot sizes are 10,000 square feet. The typical lot dimensions that we discussed earlier are 75 by 140. Each house will have two-car garages with concrete drives. Landscaping will be installed, be required to be installed at the time of construction at each house, instead of street trees. There'll be, like Doug reiterated, a lot 85 up at the entrance. There'll be a tree buffer installed along the northern entrance, per the adjacent property owner to the north. And sheet number eight kind of talks about, after dealing with the adjacent property owners and stuff like that, the developer has agreed to do homes that are constructed out in this far away, 75% masonry product materials, such as brick, stone, stucco, cement, board. Also, he's increased his square footage up in that area to a minimum of 1,600 square foot. In addition, on sheet number nine, they're proposing, you know, to the walking trails over on the east side of the property that travel parallel to the walk, to the tributary that goes, flows south to north to the West Forkstones River, there's a walking trail, along with totlot and walking trails. And I think we've kind of went over sheet number 10, talking about the off-site roadway improvements. At this time, I'll answer any questions, I know it kind of went quick, and reiterated some of Doug's same stuff, so.
Mr. Koush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Reed, Doug talked about a couple of the things that the Planning Commission had concerns on early on, and two of those were the drainage issues, which have been historically documented out there since nine years ago when this project came up. Buffering was one. And then, I have another question about the potential build-out expectation for this project, but as I recall, our county engineer, Mike Hughes, at our last Planning Commission when this was discussed, and Doug, please chime in if I'm off the reservation here, have the drainage concerns been worked out through Mike Hughes?
We did, we designed, we went above and beyond just this rezoning. We actually physically designed full-blown Phase One construction plans. We've got the detention ponds and everything shown on there, along with the fill material and the buffers of those areas. And we stay off those natural buffers, per TDEC's design guidelines.
Okay, and so the buffering guidelines are going to be met?
Yes, yes, sir. The TDEC's guidelines have been met and are met on our construction plans.
All right, and we can kind of see on this particular top illustration up there, that is the total project, correct, of 100, what, 16?
116, yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right. And based on your, because you guys develop subdivisions every day, all day, is this a, if you put your crystal ball hat on, I'm sure you have a crystal ball hat. Is this a, this is a multi-phased project?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Is this a anticipation of a three-year build-out, five-year build-out?
Well, it really depends if the economy keeps going, we're probably talking, I would guess, relay back to them, but I would think a year to three years, somewhere around the three-year mark. The first Phase One is already designed, as shown on sheet, I don't know what it was, seven, yes, seven, and it gets the majority. It's got the step system, it goes all the way to the back, it takes that whole back, this whole area and that top portion, and then you've got that little portion Phase Two, and then that little portion Phase Three. So, it'll go pretty quick once the first section gets built, the infrastructure, the step system and stuff like that. So, to answer your questions, if the economy keeps going, interest rates stay down, I would say within the next three years. Yes, sir.
Other questions for Mr. Reed before we allow the next person that may wish to speak? Mr. Piercy.
How close is this to the county line?
It abuts the county line. That, that line right there is the county line. It abuts the county line. That, that line right there is the county line.
What's the closest elementary school?
I have no idea. I'd have to defer to Doug or somebody that knows the schools.
It would probably be Christiana Elementary School, that or Rockville Elementary.
Know how far away the closest ambulance station is from this development?
The ambulance station?
Yes, it's Farce, oh, the ambulance. Oh, I don't know about that.
I'm not sure what the ambulance station is.
And Christiana as well there. I mean, as far as, it's near the school, the ambulance station.
Yes, you're right. There's an ambulance station there right off of 231.
Are there any fire hydrants in any of the other developments out there that's close to this?
I don't, I have no idea. All I know is that there's that Midland Acres is one mile to the north of us with 200 something lots there that's zoned R-15. That, I don't know if they've got a waiver for no fire hydrants or not, Doug.
Which one, the?
Midland Acres, that's just to the north.
Oh, the one, I mean, that was approved before I got here. I don't remember that one having that sprinkler system issue that some of the other subdivisions have.
But the, if you remember, a few years ago, on the other side of town, to the Wilson County line, Will and everybody here, most people probably remember, but Cascade Falls, Creeks Bend, you're talking about 1,000 lots. I did both of those. Both of those were approved at the same time. There was no water infrastructure out there. They were both approved. They were on the county line. Falls Creek approved, and there was no infrastructure out there. But both of those are now big thriving subdivisions where a lot of people live. Nice brick home subdivisions that are on the edge of the county line. But...
Other questions? Commissioner Dodd.
Did you communicate with Bedford County and if Bedford County?
No, Sir Doug and I talked.
Doug talked to Bedford?
Yeah.
I had some conversations with the Planning and Co's Director of Bedford County. They looked at the, sent them a copy of that pattern book. Really, their biggest concern had to do with that, the property line that abuts, to be the southern property line of this development, because that abuts the properties that are in Bedford County. Their biggest concern, and again, there's a copy of that email that I received from their Planning Co's Director, it should be on your iPad in the agenda packet. Really, most of their concerns were about some sort of a buffer on the southern side of that property line. Now, that being said, if this were just a traditional residential development outside of a planned development zoning, we would not require any kind of a buffer between residential zone to residential zone. The property on the opposite side of that property line in Bedford County is, I forget what their title of it is, is called the A1 District, which is similar to our RL. It's a one-acre per lot minimum.
Any other questions? Okay, then. Thank you, Mr. Reed, and we will continue the public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak for or against? Please come forward, give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Brad Smotherman. I own a home at 900 Shoreham Street in Murfreesboro, and I'm co-developer on this project. I really hate to reiterate a lot of things that Mr. Jamie Reed has already said, but I do feel like it's important to know the timeline that we experienced as developers. So we bought this land in 2006, had full approval in 2007. Luckily, we were really considering excavating this project in 2008 in the summer, and luckily, we did not do that because we all know what happened later that year. I mean, '09, '10, '11 and half of 2012 was basically a real estate Armageddon nationally and locally. So we were really fortunate that we weren't in the middle of having phases of subdivisions at that time, because we had friends that did, and that was not a good situation for them. We looked, we saw the market beginning to turn in 2012, and we wanted to begin this excavation in 2013, but that's when we realized that even the first section of the subdivision, we could not do based on the issues with consolidated utility. Not to worry, we were told, you know, we can move forward with it in about a year, year and a half, year and a half's time, which ended up being about eight weeks ago that this tower and the lines were put in place. So six of the nine years, guys, that we have owned this, we have had zero ability to move forward. We have tried, believe me, this is the time when we need lots on the ground. I looked today, and in Rutherford County, not including Smyrna and Laverne, because it's really not comparable markets, but under 250,000, I believe that there were 30 homes available. I mean, that's one section of a subdivision. I mean, and the houses are needed. The houses are extremely needed in this county. So once we went through the reapproval process with Mr. Demossi, he did requests that we do two access points, which we have done. We had the neighborhood meeting, and based on the concerns that we heard from maybe three or four homeowners in that area, we decided to increase the minimum square footage. In 2007, this was expected to be a 1,200-foot vinyl house, maybe a one-car garage, maybe a few with no car garage. What we're doing now is a 1,600-foot minimum, 75% masonry material, brick, hardy, stucco and stone. We feel like that's a better product in this area than it was in 2007. We're also doing on the north side, based on the request from a homeowner on the adjacent side, a vegetative buffer, because they requested that. We said, hey, no problem. If that makes you happier and more comfortable with the development, then that's fine. We've done everything that we can, as developers, within reason, to mitigate any risk for anyone. And we want to develop a good product. It's not what we want to do to put a product on the ground that we can't go back to and show our children 30 years from now and be proud of what we're doing. As far as the sprinkler systems, which seems to be a point of contingency for some people, we spoke with Chief Farley, and what the issue that he pointed out was that there's a less risk of loss of life in houses that have sprinkler systems. And the reason for that is they have so much more time to get out of the house. I didn't realize that before speaking with him, and we're lucky that he's here tonight to speak to that, if you guys have questions regarding sprinkler systems and fire protection in this area. But guys, we feel like this is a good development. It's needed. This area is already seeing some more land purchases that developers are going there to try and get land before a whole lot of development turns in this area. And we're blessed to be here. We're blessed to be in a county that is experiencing the amount of growth that we are, you know? And as real estate developers, we couldn't be in a better place than Middle Tennessee and especially Rutherford County right now. I'm happy to answer any questions, thoughts, concerns you guys may have to the best of my ability.
Questions? Okay, then, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this request? Okay, I don't see anyone else rising to come forward. Therefore, we will declare the public hearing closed for rezoning request 16 days, 12. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Koush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to switch my gears. I've been on the Planning Commission for a long time and remember this job from day one. And our meeting two weeks ago, when this was discussed and voted on, I was the gentleman who seconded the vote to deny the project. And my lovely wife, Stephanie, who, for whatever reason, watches this on TV at home, asked me, you know, what's the deal with Stackhorn? Because she knew when I got home, I was a little frustrated about things. And she, I said, you know, we voted no because we were concerned about this being kind of out in the middle of nowhere, which was the impression I got, and that there was concern that the lack of infrastructure, the lack of public service to the site, rescue, police, fire, that whole, and so it wasn't fair to the county to take on that financial burden because a developer wanted to build this many homes, and again, under my impression, out in an isolated area. And she said, well, then you've done the right thing, because that's why you have a planning commission to, you shouldn't allow everybody to build wherever they want to. And she was exactly right. But she asked, is it really isolated? And I said, well, the materials that have been presented to us, the planning commission, me, I'll speak for myself, over those years, I had the impression that this site was, for the lack of better description, out in the middle of nowhere, on the edge of Bedford County. Because that's how it was presented to me. That was my interpretation, right or wrong, that was my interpretation. So when she said that, I thought, well, maybe I need to little, do some due diligence and find out for myself, is it really that way? And as Mr. Reed presented tonight with the aerial map, there are truly a lot of homes around this site. We've already established that a traffic study was done, and there's adequate capacity. There is now adequate water. There is fire service, I think he said approximately three miles. I see no reason, there's nothing in our ordinance that says, just because you're out on the edge of the county line, doesn't mean you can't develop. So I'm a big boy. I'm going to admit my error and apologize to the Planning Commission, but I am going to now make a motion to approve this site and approve this development for those reasons I just stated. I think this is a good place for this. I think the infrastructure and service is there, and I would welcome this, and I think it meets all our standards. So I would make a motion to approve.
There are second. Commissioner Reed, discussion. Commissioner McAdoo.
I myself think it's a good project, but I can't, not, I just couldn't pass up the opportunity to talk on what we talked about last month. Last month, I got bombarded that we had to have 19 deputies. Commissioner Pedestree got up and said that the patrol in that area was bad and so on and so forth. So what are we looking at, per se, in the future, coming from public safety, on the Sheriff Department, our deputies patrol was patrolling that area? Because last month, I heard that, whoa, it's bad in that area. So can that commissioner get up and soothe my mind or make me feel better from last month to this month on that that was spoken of last month?
Other questions or discussion? Commissioner Reed?
Commissioner McAdoo, I don't know how good I am at soothing, and especially when you get into the area of what you're talking about. You know, I spent last Friday, I had Nancy Ammons at my house. She found out where I lived, and I thought I was hid, but she said, I can find you, and she did. But hopefully, I mean, we did hire 19 more employees, and the idea of those extra patrolmen we had is to give us that extra shift to help those, that work. And hopefully, within the future, that does work there. And that, I mean, like I said, I wish I could soothe you totally and guarantee you solely that that would be there. But there are patrols out there like there are in other areas, and that's what we've got there. This is my district. I know at the, at the, when this did come up in planning, I was here that evening, and I did hear those neighbors get up and hear what their concerns were. And I've got to be honest with you, I have spent, probably since I had heard from Doug Demossi saying that this was coming back and coming back here to this commission, I've spent that time trying to figure this out, exactly where I stood and how I should react as far as this was in my district. And I spent a lot of time over there where this site is, and I've spent a lot of time in the Midland area trying to figure this out and look at it. And like Mr. McAdoo, you know, this is out there, but I mentioned that night up there of the square footage or the square miles that are out there in this district, there's a lot of developable land in that area. In fact, as I was out there visiting around, trying to figure out about this development right here, I run into homeowners out there that had just been visited by a developer and then by a builder that was wanting to buy their property, right where this is located too. Across from where this property is, there's several acres right in front of it that I'm fairly well certain that it's going to come up to. The concern of the water, I know that was mentioned here, but we have, I've been back to Mr. Demossi and to our engineer to see where we are there, and been assured that that would be looked at very closely. With this being a PUD, that puts more restrictions on it than if it was just a standard subdivision. When you put a PUD on a piece of property like this, that means that those restrictions have to be followed, and that's the way it has to be. So that means this is a different development than what you would normally have and what we would have there. The thing that catches my attention is that these individuals have spent a long time dealing with some situations, and I think I mentioned this to the mayor. I said, any of you that remember Little Abner, there was a guy in Little Abner that everywhere he went, there was a black cloud over his head. And it seemed like everywhere he went, this black cloud followed him everywhere he went. And it seems like this has happened to this development, because every time they would get one foot forward, they'd have to step two steps back. I mean, if it wasn't a recession, then all of a sudden, it was the water. I was concerned about that. I spoke to our director at CUD at 5:00 this afternoon. He assured me that the water flow is there now. The tower is up and running. That's out there. They have told us, of course, that they're going to sprinkle this development. If any time that they decide not to sprinkle this development, all that has to be done is a different water line has to be run north, and it can be hooked up and hydrants can be put in at any time. This is a situation where the neighbors met in a public hearing, and everything that they asked for, the developer agreed to. They agreed to increase the square footage. They went to 1,600. They agreed, instead of vinyl houses, they went to masonry or brick or hardy board, which means it gives them a better house. They agreed to buffer, and they said they would use the University of Tennessee Extension and Horticulture, I believe, services to develop that. One thing that hasn't been mentioned here, located also within this or out towards the front is Smotherman Cemetery, which is a very important cemetery in that community out there. And they have made a contact, or I went to those individuals who were responsible for that cemetery to get their opinions. And they were concerned about this, and the developers have made a contact to them, saying that they would buffer that cemetery, where the development would be not affecting it. So they have agreed to that. So with all of that, you can see that this development, developers have tried to do everything possible that they can do to make it right. The thing that concerns me is that all down Midland Road, there are signs for sale. There are 14 acres for sale. There are different acreages for sale. And what you can do on every one of those sites, and correct me, Mr. Demossi, if I'm wrong, by right, you can go in there and use just standard subdivision, and you can build whatever you want to build within those standards. In other words, they could go in there and build a 1,000-square-foot house, a vinyl or a double-wide. And I don't think the Midland community wants that in their community. So I worry that, you know, if this is not approved or something of that type, we end up with a development that's not of the quality that this is. So sometimes, do you take what you think is the better and get what you want rather than later on, get what you get? And that's what I have to look at, as far as that's what the concern is here. Because I know this is a restricted development. It has to follow these directions. Because I know this is a restricted development, it has to follow these directions and the way we go there. This is an A road, I went out there to see that. I have a daughter that lives out here near Rucker Lane, and I went out there where they're building and I almost got run off the road out there. And this road does have a shoulder on it, at least. So, that's the difference that I see.
Mr. McAdoo again, please.
So, in summary, you will be happy if we pass this subdivision with the patrol that would be in that area right now? In other words, you have no problem with the patrol coming from the sheriff department in this area if we add a hundred and sixteen more plats or lots or whatever in your area?
From what we have seen from the traffic study, it says it will not put any more stress upon the traffic there than what we already have. And the number that we're talking about here, this is a three-phase development, so you're not getting a hundred and sixteen houses all at once. And I think Mr. Reed had said, "We're talking about three years." Hopefully, in three years, we might have a whole new direction as far as our sheriff's department is concerned.
All right, anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Phillips, please.
I don't even know where to start. I chair the planning commission. The planning commission voted this down unanimously. We've had a change of heart, and I understand that. I support the CUD process. I think it's a much better use of our land as we go forward. The guidelines that we look at as planners is what is appropriate as far as the development, especially when you're talking about a planned unit. This is on the outer ring of the county, and our guidelines say that probably it's not the best use of that land out there, needs to be bigger lots. In a nutshell, that's what our process says. And that's what our planning commission, the decision that they made, at least that's what this planner made. Now, I'm saying that other circumstances probably has arisen, and it's not the worst thing for us to approve this. But if we start proving planned unit developments out in the outer reaches, the next time one comes out on the other side of the county where none of that infrastructure is, we'll probably be in a weaker position to have to make a decision on that. Maybe not the planning commission, but this commission probably will. I've got a concern that if we approve this, we're starting a process that we may not be ready for as we start developing. I'm not against the development out there, I think it's appropriate, but I also think it should be bigger lots. Mr. Demossi said a minute ago, Bedford County, not Bedford, but yeah, Bedford County has one acre lots. And that's kind of semi, sort of what our guidelines are when we get closer to the county lines. And that's the reason that this planning commissioner voted against it along with everybody else. Now, I know things have changed. And I also know that the planned unit process is the wave of the future and what we ought to be looking at. And I think Mr. Smotherman ought to be commended for trying to upgrade that. So, I'm not sitting here saying that that's the best that we can do, and it might be. But what I am saying is that I don't think a planned unit with that many houses on this acreage in that particular point, at that particular place, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Still gonna vote no.
Other questions? Mr. Nipper?
I grew up in that area and very familiar with where it's located and all that. I have a problem with the infrastructure as far as the roads through there. Yes, the road is wide, Midland Road is, with the shoulders that is. Till you get to the little market there, then you turn right and head towards 231, the road is not in as good of a shape as I would like to see it. Now, if you come out of the proposed subdivision, turn left like you're going towards Shebivoy, the next road to the left, you can go down it and it is really a narrow road. Now, where the subdivision is proposed, I'd say within five miles going towards 231, as the crow flies, is a rock quarry. So you got blasting, you got dust, you got all of that, which I think is something to be concerned about. But those two things, I'd like to, you know, just throw out to everyone and tell you that that subdivision that far out, I don't think I could vote for it. Thank you.
One else wish to speak? Mr. Dodd?
Yeah, I, one concern I had at the committee level when this came before us was, we approved, we approved, we approved, we approved. We gave an extension, we gave an extension, we gave an extension. And I'm being a little redundant on purpose. And then all of a sudden, we stopped. We changed our minds. And I'm concerned about that. What do we open for from a legal standpoint? Somebody met every regulation, met every standard, made modifications to improve it even after it was approved previously, they continued to make improvements. And then one day, we said, our attitude changed, not our policy, but our attitude, and we are going to cease you moving forward. So I'm distressed about that, the investment that's been made, the commitment that's been made. Our pledge to approve it has been made multiple times. CUD pledged to approve it and then repledged and created more infrastructure. So I'm gonna vote yes on those grounds that we approved it multiple times and gave the impression to continue investing money and then decided to say no. I just don't think that's right and I will be voting yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Well, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I wanna clarify a little something Commissioner Dodd just said. We drew the line in the sand after multiple years. We said, "We're not gonna approve this after one more year." And the only changes came into play after it got denied and brought, and came back as a resubmit. So that's when the changes came. So it's not like the planning commission all of a sudden just said, "Hey, we don't like this anymore." We kept saying, "Hey, this is getting ridiculous." It's been seven years, eight years, however many years and stuff. And I'm not gonna get into the aspects of all of it tonight. We've all heard about this for a long time, but we didn't just at the last minute decide to change our mind. We even told them a year in advance, "This is the last time." Because after that had been approved, there are limits to how many times something could be extended that weren't in play in '06, '07. So it was grandfathered in, but it was getting a little ridiculous to us, so we just kept on getting. And we didn't hear about the water tank until '15. Last year was the first time anybody mentioned the water problems to us. But I'm not gonna get into the aspects of the merits of the subdivision. You can go pro and con on a PRD or PUD, you get guarantees on this kind of house and stuff like that. But the planning commission didn't at the last eleventh hour say, "Hey, we're just gonna vote this down." There was plenty of notice given, given as far as that was, that goes, that change anyway.
The other discussion? Commissioner Allen?
I just wanna address my no vote at planning commission. And I also wanna make a clarification of a point that Mr. Smotherman made. He excluded the lot counts in Smyrna and Laverne when you're looking at the landscape of lots available in Rutherford County. And you can't do that from a planning standpoint. The thing that I've learned on the planning commission through the years is that good land use planning and proper development occurs from the inside ring of infrastructure out. And so good development occurs along with that pace. You are putting stress not only on the police, but on the school bus drivers, you're increasing commute, pollution, those kinds of things when you put something in a far out area before its time. And so that was, along with what Commissioner Jordan said, as we were doing the renewals of approvals, we weren't reevaluating the project itself every time. These were letters that were being submitted, "Please extend, please extend." So when we had the opportunity to look at it closer again, we were like, "This is no longer a fit." So, and when I say no longer, I mean hindsight's 20/20. You know, you learn as a planning department, you learn as planning developers as you go through this. And so that was part of the education process for me, is that I determined it was not good land use. Or, I'm sorry, just not good, not appropriate planning. I think this development is gonna be great when the time comes, I think it could be great closer in, I just think it's a little bit ahead of its time.
One else wish to speak? Mr. Dodd wishes to speak again.
If this is denied, Doug, what can go there by right?
If this is denied, the property is zoned RL, which is residential low density, which does require a one acre per lot minimum. Now, that being said, there are provisions in our zoning ordinance currently that we approved when we approved the new zoning ordinance back in 2012, effective 2013. If they were to extend the water line to the property, the water line that would serve that property would be able to support fire hydrants, based on our conversations with CUD, the upsized water line could support fire hydrants. They would have an area, as they do now, for step system. With that, they could actually take that density down to three units per acre, just like in the RM district. Even though the property is zoned RL, we do have provisions in the ordinance to do allow for a denser development if those infrastructure improvements are there. At that point, they could just do a traditional subdivision based on the subdivision regulations in effect, and there would be no controls as far as materials or anything like that. It would just be if they meet the minimum lot size and then there are the requirements of the zoning and the subdivision regulations. The gross density is 2.9 units per acre. Now, that's in a perfect world. You're looking at 62 acres. Generally, you have to take about 20% at least out for roads, easements, in this case, step system land and everything. You know, at 60 acres, if you're going about three inches an acres, that'd be 180. I doubt they'd get anywhere near that. They probably wouldn't quite get as many as they're showing now. I'd guess somewhere between 80 and 100, just looking at it. That's very, very rough. It may not even be that, it may be closer to 70, 75 or something to that effect.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I will be voting for this for a couple of reasons. Seems like some extenuating circumstances have prevented this from being come to fruition. And out of a sense of fairness, I think the developers have been kind of jacked around a little bit. So, that's my reason that I'm gonna vote for it.
Any other discussion or any other person wishing to make any comments? I don't see anyone wishing to speak, therefore, this is electronic. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please. He has voted, Mr. Well, we got him voting yes. Mr. Jernigan, your machine may or may not be working, but our clerk has voted you yes. Is that correct? Now, let's see what the rest of these votes say.
Fifteen yes, five no, one abstain, which I think is Commissioner Jernigan's. Motion passes.
Motion passed. Thank you very much for that healthy discussion. All right, we will go back now then and pick back up where we left off. The resolution to approve the consent agenda is next. Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed the items on that consent agenda and barring any commissioner choosing to remove one of those items from the consent agenda, I move that that consent agenda be approved.
Second, Commissioner Dodd. Anyone have anything they want removed? I don't see that happening, therefore, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
We're good.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
That was unanimous. Okay, we do not have any unfinished business, therefore, now we're ready to move down to our reports by the standing committees. Commissioner Jordan on the Budget, Finance and Investment Committee, please.
Good evening, everybody. Item M1A, General Fund Budget Amendments. Resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Property assessor from unassigned fund balance, $10,000. Data processing equipment, $10,000. That's for the copier that was in last year's budget that didn't get through in the time and is putting that money back. Sheriff's Department unassigned fund balance, $24,749. Other contracted services, $10,726. Other supply and maintenance and material, $3,779. Other supply and material, $10,241. That's more stuff that didn't get done before the end of last year that's being carried into this year. Then, got some federal grant money. Other federal state, $64,836 goes to overtime, $54,802. Social Security, $3398. State retirement, $5,942. And employer Medicare, $794. Resolved this 15th day of September. Mr. Chairman, I saw move.
And a second from Commissioner Serino. Anyone have any questions about this? All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, all have now voted then. Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item M1B, Solid Waste Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste fund be amended as follows. Post-closure care clause, decrease assigned for public health and welfare, $50,000. Increase expenditures continuation for post-closure contingencies for post-closures, $50,000. That's for hauling leachate. We're hauling more and more leachate, we've already used up this year's budget and this might get us through, probably won't, I believe. And also under landfill operation maintenance, assigned for public health and welfare, $31,315. To penalties, $31,315. That's the penalty from the state that we are appealing, but we are transferring the money just in case we lose that appeal. Resolved this 15th day of September 2016. Mr. Chairman, I saw move.
Second, three people on the back row back there and others, I believe. We'll go with Mr. Phillips, Dodd and Nipper. Any questions on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, here comes Mr. Gucci.
Welcome back to, Mr. Gucci.
We're voting on item M1B, and you've already voted according to this screen I have here. Now, Mr. Jernigan has not voted. Everyone has now voted. Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item M1C, Education Capital Project Fund Budget Amendment. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Educational Capital Project Fund be amended to complete the projects, to complete these projects. Roofing at Barfield School at $271,436 and the running track at Laverne High School for $30,702 remaining from the 2015-16 fiscal year as follows. Committee for Capital Projects, $302,138. To maintenance and repair buildings, $302,138. This is some more stuff that didn't get finished last year and is carrying the money over. Resolved this 15th day of September 2016. Mr. Chairman, I saw move.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Any questions? If not, then please cast your votes. If not, then please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right then, thank you. Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item M1D, Energy-Efficient Schools Initiative Loan Agreement. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires the Rutherford County Commission to enter into a loan agreement with the Energy-Efficient Schools Council in an amount of $2,137,047 for the term of seven years at a rate of 100 basis points. That's one tenth of a percent. To finance energy efficient, is that right? That one, that's 1%, 1%. One tenth would have been better. To finance energy management systems and retrofit existing energy efficient, efficient energy, it says inefficient, yeah, inefficient lighting in various Rutherford County schools. Whereas this loan is being adopted pursuant to Title IX, Section 21 of Tennessee Code Anticipated, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute, execute all necessary documents with the state of Tennessee Energy-Efficient School Council relative to the loan agreement in an amount of $2,137,047 for a term of seven years at a rate of 100 basis points. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as is set forth herein at length verbatim for the purposes of financing energy management systems and retrofit existing inefficient lighting in Rutherford County schools. Resolved this 15th day of September 2016. Mr. Chairman, I saw move.
Commissioner Nipper is one that has made a second. Any questions or discussion on this? If not, then, excuse me, Mr. Phillips.
Can we refresh my memory, those of us that are on Health and Ed, I can't remember. This is improved alone, then we have to decide who's going to do it, right? So, companies can bid to do the efficiency part of the process. Has a company been chosen?
Yes.
Was that put out to bid? Okay, so a vendor has already been selected for this, this process, right? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, there being no other one wishing to speak, then please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right then, thank you very much. Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item M1E, Architectural Fee Funding for School Projects. Whereas there is a need to plan, far and construct schools due to growth in the area, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education has anticipated the future needs of the school system, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the architectural design of the following projects at the estimated fees approved by various county committees. Rockvale High School, $1,962,000. Rocky Fork Elementary School, $1,204,000. Laverne High and Smyrna High Restroom and Concessions, $15,000, for a total of $3,181,000. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding for the design of the projects in an estimated amount of $3,181,000 be authorized from the previous operating transfer from the general purpose school fund to other capital project fund resolved this 15th day of September 2016. Mr. Chairman, I saw move.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Questions? Mr. Schaefer?
I just want to mention, it's something that the school board at least brought up in the Budget Committee, and I just think they ought to be recognized for it, that we pay the lowest architectural fees around because we take plans that we've had and just slight modifications to them to fit the topography and everything. So, we don't start from scratch every time we build another elementary school, or a high school, or whatever. So, I just wanted to, I think they need an attaboy for that.
All right, thank you.
I would, Mr. Clardy, do a good job, especially Mr. Clardy, at getting our dollars.
Commissioner Phillips?
I'm sorry, but this, this $15,000 for Laverne and Smyrna, we've talked about this for a couple of years, and I'm not opposed to it, don't get me wrong, but I think the last that I heard about it, or that I remember about it, we ask the school board to get back with those two high schools and participate in fundraising to add, if I'm not mistaken, it's a million and a half dollars each. Is that correct? Somebody help me?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's that high personally. Of course, this is a design money, so that we do know that whether we fund it, or the booster clubs, or whoever funds it, it'll be done correctly.
Okay, so we're-
At least it's my thinking that, that we want to make sure it's designed right. There's some of the problems down there wouldn't exist today if something was designed by an architect 15 years ago. There's been some buildings put in the wrong places and stuff. I may be speaking out of term, but that's, that's my thought as far as the design money.
I'm not opposed to going through this process, but I know that Health and Ed has talked the last couple of years about the expense of, of adding restrooms, visitors' restrooms, those types of things, and, and we ask, if I'm not mistaken, that, that those schools get involved in some type of a process to help offset the cost of that. And I just wondered where we were with that. So, usually when we approve a design, it's just one step away from approving the project, and that's the reason that I brought it up. I just wondered where we were in that process. I'm a little concerned about approving this without having that additional information, but I know those things are needed, don't get me wrong, but I think what we've been saying is that instead of spending however much it was, a million and a half on each school, or 3 million, we'd rather spend that 3 million in classrooms than restrooms at a football field that we use six times a year. So, that was our thought process, and I'm a little concerned about approving this, and then it being the next step, just kind of going ahead with it. So, I've got a little bit of a concern about that. Although I'm going to vote for it, expect those questions to come up again in Health and Ed, okay?
Health and Ed Chairman, we'd be more than happy to expound on this, but I don't know if you really want her to get up or not.
Let me, we're going to recognize Mr. Gurley, but let me say something on behalf of the school board. I have been involved in these very discussions that you're bringing up there, Mr. Phillips, and I think they've done about all they can do to determine from within at those two schools, and I don't think that's encouraging the prospects of getting those funds there, and they've even gone outside into other opportunities that have not proved fruitful, okay? So, I think they've made a pretty reasonable effort, and I have attended them on at least one or two of those occasions. Mr. Gurley?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify a little bit what Jeff was talking about. Yes, I'm sure, you know, the next thing will be a discussion on whether to fund this design that's done, but one of the reasons we're even looking at this is because somewhere back years ago, either the school board, or the school took it on itself, or some booster club came in there and just did it and caused the problem that we have, especially at Laverne. And so, I think going forward, and to win my vote on even talking about this, I was assured going forward by the board that the school board and the superintendents, the directors, engineering assistant superintendent for engineering will be the one approving these, and these designs will be done efficiently in accordance with ADA regulations, safety regulations, taking in the, a good design so that we don't have to be coming back. Because obviously, the reason we're even talking about this is because someone didn't do their due diligence several, several years ago, and it's, it's been back a while. But, the, there, there is a, I had the same concerns. I've been convinced by visiting, there is an issue there. At some point in time, we do have to correct that, and going forward, we want to do it correctly, and so therefore, I will be voting for this design.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess, and Commissioner Gurley, you eased my mind.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or discussions? Are we ready to vote? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, now everyone has voted, so please record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
You?
Item M1F, Blind Operated Vending Facilities Agreement for Jail. Whereas the Tennessee Department of Human Services Department desires to enter into a contract with Rutherford County to operate the inmate commissary services at the Rutherford County Adult Detention, and whereas the inmate commissary may be used by the department to establish a vending facility to be operated by a licensed blind vendor in accordance with TCA 71-4-501. And whereas the licensed blind vendor shall remit on a monthly basis 20% of the prior 30-day sales of Rutherford County General Fund, and whereas the contract shall remain in effect until terminated by either party upon 60 days written notice. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute the contract with the Tennessee Department of Human Services. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as is set forth herein at length verbatim to operate the inmate commissary services at the Rutherford County Attention, Adult Detention Center. Resolved this 15th day of September 2016. I don't think they're going to be selling East Sigs either. Mr. Chairman, I saw move.
Second, Commissioner Piercy and Mr. P. Mr. P., please.
Quick question. In this verbiage here, it says that the contract shall remain in effect until terminated by either party upon 60-day written notice. Who has the authority to terminate this contract? Is it the commission and the mayor, or is that the sheriff?
Well, I've read, really, I wasn't aware of this, that particular sentence, and I'd have to get my agreement out. This is a right by the Tennessee Department of Human Services that represents the blind, you might say. Basically, we don't have any real choice in this matter. I don't know how we would give 60 days' notice. Mr. Kope, I, I don't really think that's a practical statement that's being made, but I'll have to defer to him, please.
No, I think that this is approved by the commission. The commission will be the one would have to terminate it.
I don't-
Typically, that could be exercised by your chief administrative officer, which in this case would be the mayor.
Here, we'll be executing this agreement. I mean, you're giving me permission to do that, and I might could read through this, but it might take me a minute, minute or two to find that.
Mr. Chairman, I would think we could pull out of the contract if we had cause, but there'd have to be cause involved. That'd be the only way we would be able to-
Yeah, I mean, there may be something in that effect, and I apologize for not being up to speed on that, Commissioner P., but I think we should all expect that this will be a very long-term agreement. Any other questions? All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. Now, Health and Education Committee, there's not a report, but each of you, I believe, have on your table a report of the daily attendance for the third month of our school system that's been provided by Mr. Odom, and you can see that we have an increase of 2.37%, and they have identified these, where these gains and increases are, high school, middle school, and K through 5, and the note, the footnote says that four of our high schools have now increased to where their enrollment exceeds 2,000 each, so that's a note they wanted to make you aware of. Okay, let's see. Next, we're on to, excuse me, I'm a little bit delinquent, I'm going to stop here just for a moment, and I meant to do this before we got to Health and Ed, but I think we should give our finance director an opportunity to give you a report on the bids that we just took yesterday regarding the issuance of the $101 million of new debt. Ms. Nolan, please.
Sorry, but we did take bids yesterday, and we received, we sold $101 million in school bonds and public improvement. We received over a $4 million premium. Our true interest cost on that was 2.36, 2.3634. We had 10 people to bid on this, on this money, so we were very excited. It's the best rate that we've gotten.
Ever.
Ever. Now, we did do, and we reported this to help, to a budget-
Oh, you did, not refunding, it's been lower.
On new money, on refunding that we did at the end of August. Our rate was 1.565. Pretty darn good.
We felt really good. The first three of those bids were only different in the third decimal point, so, I mean, really, really tight bids, which means we think is a very, very competitive bid.
So, just to refresh your memory, what we were borrowing for was the full amount for the parking garage and the justice center. Also, Rocky Fork Middle and Smyrna Middle renovation and planning for David Jerry.
Thank you again, Ms. Nolan, and Mark, and all of her team. Again, they continue to do a remarkable job of getting our data together and presenting this to our rating agencies. Ms. Allen?
Could you just spend a minute and tell the commission what you shared with us at budget regarding our bond, the bond rating?
I am so glad you said that. Um, yes, we, through all this process, we do, we are rated by S&amp;P and Standard and Poor's, and both of them gave us our same rating, double A plus and double A one, but S&amp;P changed our outlook from stable to positive. So, they also put in a blurb. Give me a little hope that they are considering us for a future upgrade. I really want to be triple A.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Nolan, and again, please, I'm going to regress and attempt to address Mr. P.'s question. Mr. P., on page eight of this agreement, I'll just read it, it's one long sentence. "This agreement shall remain in effect until terminated by either management or TBE, Tennessee Blind Entity, upon 60 days' written notice, provided, however, that if this agreement is terminated for any reason, it shall not be construed that TBE in any way waives its statutory priority to manage and operate any future vending facilities at this site." That looks like a lot of double talk there to me, Mr. Kope. I don't know, but that's the language.
Well, the operative word is that the county is the one who is entering in the contract, and the county would be the one who would be entitled to terminate it, but the gobbledygook to which the mayor referred basically said that there is a statutory priority for Tennessee blind vendors, and you're not going to be able to run away from that. So, if they want to provide the service, we might terminate, might have to renegotiate some contract terms, but ultimately, they have priority as to providing those services.
Well, I'm very much in favor of this, this vendor change out there. We've had some problems with the current vendor, all of us aware of it. I think it's just another step toward cleaning some of that mess up. And two, I wanted to make it clear that we, as this body and the mayor, are the ones that have the authority to appoint or get rid of the vendor out there.
All right, thank you. Moving along then, we don't have any reports from property management, public safety, or public works. We have one more agenda item under Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. So, Mr. Gooch, we have one resolution there, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Steering has one item for your consideration this evening, and it's a resolution to exempt certain motor vehicles from inspection and maintenance. Whereas Mr. Chair Public Chapter 1028 authorizes counties to exempt motor vehicles, three models, years, or less old from the IEM program, and whereas it is in the best interest- model years or less old from the IM program, and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County that Rutherford County authorize the exemption by a majority vote of the commission. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners pursuant to Public Chapter 1028, that motor vehicles three model years or less old be, and hereby are exempt from the inspection and maintenance program countywide. Be it further resolved, the clerk shall submit a copy of this resolution to the Technical Secretary of the Air Pollution Control Board and certify if by majority vote of the commission, and this is resolved the fifteenth day of September 2016. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And a second from someone on public safety, or public work, Steering, Mr. Nipper, anyone have a question?
I have a question. Chairman Gooch, does there need to be some wording in here about any late-model vehicle within the three years that have been modified by their owner, such as exhaust or high-performance parts to where these are now not burning as efficient, or, you see what I'm saying? If you take a new car and hot-ride it, does that not create a problem with emissions?
What's not in our language, and I don't think it's in the statute, is it?
I was trying to see if I had the whole statute, I'm not sure I do. Yes, we do have the whole, Jim, if you would, you'll probably read this quicker than me. There's the statute, please.
Yeah, the statute only says three, I'll read it, and that are three or less model years old from those motor vehicle inspection requirements. That's all it says.
To address your question, though, Commissioner, the statute does not seem to address any modifications, it's just by each classification. So, again, this is what the state has said is statutorily permitted. That's the state act.
State act. But your hot rod would still be eligible. Yeah, your hot rod. No.
Commissioner Jordan.
I support this 100%, and having a couple of sons that are fairly young, I know a lot of stories about young people that take the stuff off their car in time for their tags expire, they put it back on, go through emissions, take it off again, so there's ways around all this. But 99.9%, I would think, percentage of these three-year-old cars pass, it's a hardship on these people going out there getting tested. You know, when you've got a two-year-old car and you gotta get it tested, any relief we can give the people legally, I'd say, let's give it to them, and the ones that want to go around it will find a way to get around it, to hot-ride their cars and stuff, so I think we ought to do that. I'd rather it be five years than three, firstly, you know?
I understand. Don't get me wrong, I'm not against it, I just thought the state might have better language to cover situations like that.
And I will, I did inform all of our, the municipalities, they had to be, I gave them an opportunity, if they wanted not to participate, all of us have to do it, we can't do it by pieces, but all of them are in favor, Smyrna, Laverne, and Egleville, of participating, they support this approach. Mr. P., please.
I just wanted to mention this, and I brought it up in Budget, and I think the correct number, the fee to have this done now is around $9, used to be 10, but the county, this is not a county initiative, this is entirely for the state. Now, the county, Rutherford County gets 24 or 26 cents out of that $9, or out of that 10, is that correct?
They've increased that 25 cents to a dollar about a year ago, and we, and-
All right.
We didn't know that.
Well, my point is, this wasn't initiative done by the county, and the fees there, what we were getting, that 26 cents, was to pay for us handling the money and the paperwork. That's basically what we were getting paid for, and it sounds like they're probably paying us what it cost us now. Thank you.
Did we actually get a motion and a second, Mr. Spence? All right, Mr. Nipper, any other questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Mayor, everyone has voted, thank you. Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Is there any other business to come before this body? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Next Thursday, on the 22nd, the TCAA has its annual regional meeting at Henry Horton State Park, and I think that's at 6 o'clock, and if you've never been, it's a wonderful buffet, plus the chance to get to raise some concerns to our association about some things that they could help us with. I plan on attending, and I'll meet here at the courthouse around 5 o'clock, and we can carpool out there, anyone that's interested in going. Also, if you can't go, and there are some things that you would want to bring up, if you wanted to contact me, I'll be more than happy to try to bring those concerns up to TCAA for you, okay?
Thank you very much. Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, this is the weekend at, in Laverne for Old Timers' Day. It's just started right now, a little while ago with the carnival starting, and it'll go through Saturday, and Saturday morning will be a ham breakfast at the Rescue Squad on Gamble Lane, which is right off the old highway, and a parade will be in the morning, and then there'll be kind of music and, and things to buy, of course, and eat and all that at Veterans Park after the parade's over. So, y'all come now.
Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to invite everyone in the community to Smyrna on September 23rd and 24th, are our 10th Annual Depot Days. On Friday, September 23rd, from 6 to 9, there will be a car cruise-in in the depot area, and also a wine tasting, and then from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock on the Saturday, the 24th, is the Depot Day celebration. There'll be all kinds of vendors out there with their merchandise, and food, and so forth, that you can sample, and they're expecting a really big crowd, and I think it's going to be a really amazing time, so we hope to see you all there.
Thank you. And I see Commissioner Reed, then Commissioner Dodd.
For the past two days, I have been spending my time at the Sam Davis Home. We're in the middle of Heritage Days out there. I have been Charles Davis, the father of Sam Davis, out there, and I've been explaining to our schoolchildren across this county on the curing of meat, and how it was done in 1860. And by the time I get through tomorrow, I've been talking to about 3,000 children in this county right here, and the reason I'm standing up and telling you this is, I want to tell you I have learned a total appreciation for our teachers in this school system, because unless you have done a literary, tried to debate with a 10-year-old that knows a whole lot more than you do in some things, you really just don't understand what our teachers go through. But they have brought those children out there, they've been educated, they're learning something, the way it should be taught, hands-on, they're seeing what's going on. So, Heritage Days is going on at the Sam Davis Home this week, and it's going on, will be going on tomorrow. Let me also mention that the Diamond in the West, Egleville, will be having their Fall Festival next Saturday, and we invite everybody here to come on out. I know we'll be competing with the depot down there in Smyrna, but we invite you out to Egleville, to come out to the Diamond in the West out there, to see what's going on out there.
Mr. Nipper, did you want, or was it Mr. Dodd? Mr. Dodd?
Yes, I, you did call me, right? I wanted to thank Mr. Jordan for chastising me when I spoke about Planning Commission, it was appropriate. In the heat of the moment, insinuated that the Planning Commission was not necessarily professional, articulate in making their decisions, and that was inappropriate, because I have the utmost respect for every committee that this board fills. I think we've been one of the most reasonable group of men and women that I've seen in this county in years, including the Planning Commission, so those on that board, please accept my apology.
Thank you. Mr. Captain, did you want to say something there, please?
While many of y'all are at car shows drinking wine, and, you know, eating ham, there'll be a large amount of people up at Greenhouse Ministries between 8 and 12 o'clock, there's a mobile pantry, so it's a great event to come out there, bring your family, bring your group, and hand out food. And then there'll also be the Murfreesboro Young Professionals from 11 to 2, right at Civic Plaza, you can go right across and get you some ice cream at the Ice Cream Bowl benefiting United Way, so.
Thank you very much, a lot of great things happening. Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and finally, I think, this Saturday in Smyrna, we are celebrating the 40th anniversary of David Urie Elementary School. I know that's very near and dear to Mr. Odom and several others. From 11 o'clock in the morning till 2 o'clock in the afternoon, there's going to be over 20 games, there's going to be inflatables, there's going to be pizza, and all the junk food you probably shouldn't eat, but your kids will love to eat, or your grandchildren will. We'd love to see you come out there, there's wristbands for sale when you get there that you could purchase, and a lot of good things going on in Smyrna, and that's one of them, that's this weekend again, at David Urie Elementary, from 11 to 2 p.m. in the afternoon. Thank you.
Right, anyone else? Don't want to leave anyone out. Thank you very much, we appreciate your participation. We are adjourned.